...for Thursday, February 7th. All three selectmen present. The executives present, town administrators present, and recording for the people who cannot attend, Leo Martell. Thank you, Leo. Okay, we've had some sad news this week. Before I continue the meeting, Les, one of our former selectmen, passed away this week.
Wow.
And it was Tuesday afternoon.
Les Hammond.
Les Hammond, thank you. It was sudden, probably unexpected, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for a moment, Graham. Please. Okay, thank you. They've been amended.
I'll make a motion to move to approve the January 31st, 2019 meeting that has been amended.
Second. Any further discussion on them? No hearing in all favor? Aye. There's some tough news, there was a lot of discussion last week, so it's highly important, every piece of information, you did a good job. Same here, group. Yep. Okay, an open public comment. I have four individuals in the back row. Not Leo, sir?
Fred Mullin. We're trying to keep Dunbarton a secret, but we'll go back into fame again, I guess, in two weeks. Dunbarton's supposed to be on Chronicle and Channel 5 at 7:30 at night, but the exact day, I don't know for sure. I think Mike's supposed to get notified by then.
What it was, was the historical folks in Fred, who knows the true center of New England, escorted these gentlemen from Channel 5 Chronicle, and they were making like a tour, making stops at various historical towns, and Dunbarton was selected to be a stop because of our geographical center, and for some reason, they were intrigued with the telephone company being our new telephone company. So, they made a visit, and Fred was a host for them. Thank you, Fred. And I think Donna Dunn also gave assistance. Okay. Jeff, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, good.
Chief? Okay, bring it back to the board. All right. We're gonna go right through the business, we had some, do we have a check with some money there?
We do.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the money?
I'll make a motion for RSA 31:95-B-1003, very rough B, to accept the donation, the amount of $225 for Wade, W-A-D, for donations of Dunbarton Family Dental Care and other donations.
Second.
Just explain Wade for me.
Wraith across Dunbarton.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
It's one.
One?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Lee, if you could take care of that. All right, we're ahead of schedule, so things we have a public hearing at 7:30, so I'm gonna go to town business right now. And so I got the inbox I'm gonna go through. First of all.
It's only seven before.
Okay. We got a thank you note from the Gamache family for the donation we made on behalf of Bob Pete's, his mother.
Do you want to take the time now to make a mention to the other?
Yes, I think is, same time. Patrick Bowden at the transfer station lost his dad this week, and his dad passed away, and he's taking some time off for funeral, and we got a card for him, and appropriate donation's gonna be made on behalf of the town, on behalf. So, I'm gonna sign this. And I think is, they had a picture of his dad, what a split image of Patrick. Did you see the picture? Yeah. Okay. Basically, I have amendment to the personnel plan, we already approved it, just requires a signature. This is on the highway winter maintenance on call position. Already approved it.
You actually need to make a motion, because there was a consensus at the workshop meeting, and in order for me to put it into the personnel plan, you need to make a motion.
Well, we didn't make a motion that night, but I can, I can make it.
Okay, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the winter, highway winter maintenance on call, and that's for full-time highway maintenance employees are required to be on call in order to provide timely, efficient winter maintenance snow roll and ice control on the roadways of the municipality for the safety and benefit of the town residents and the general monitoring public. Compensation for being on call will be set by the Board of Selectment and be distributed each year in the last pay period of January. And I guess we'll make the adoption on this day.
I'll say that, okay.
Jim, I'll get your card.
Any discussion on that, Jim?
February 7th.
I think we've got a lot of support of that.
In all, in all favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have a thank you note from one of our employees for the gift card from the holiday season, so noted, if you didn't see it, we'll take a peek at that, because that was very nice. We'll move on. So, panel, we've regarded that contract, we've got an opinion from our lawyer, we need some further information, I think Bob has the lead on that, and we'll probably defer a decision to next week.
And I have an opinion on some of her observations, and just to share with you guys, so you can read this later on. When you read, when you read her response, as far as the governor and executive council, that's the views right there, that comes off there. So, I don't understand what she's got there, but I'm gonna do some further investigating. So, John, we're beginning to hear, thing will avoid when it comes to that.
Okay. We, there's no urgency to execute, but they're not gonna start anything until it's ready.
It's one of those issues, remember you mentioned some kind of getting improper advice.
Right, right. I just want to verify the advice.
No, I'm gonna grant you, why don't you have to prove it, I didn't see it, but she had any answers for us on it.
Okay. I wanted to mention a follow-up regarding, last week, there was a request by a resident, Mike Guyney, to do some further additional plowing along the road of his road and Kelsey Road, and that was, he reported back to me Friday evening, or Friday evening after it was accomplished, and he was very happy with that, and the only thing is, he just wants to be, wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, the power drivers know that there's an area where he had an old septic system, he doesn't, wants to make sure that there's no heavy equipment goes over that area. So, they were a little, as I was saying, they aggressively plowed, so he just wants to make sure, be careful in that area, as a precaution, but he was overall, the town, the town, the local agent went up and took care of that.
Does it turn around for the part, right?
Yes, as, as we're following the court order, court decision, excuse me. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go, if you have anything else for business, I'm gonna bring that up now, and I'm gonna ask for Dave, if you have anything for the group, group.
Being where the Les Hammond was a long time, selectmen in town, and also on several other committees, I was gonna bring it up later, but since we have time earlier here, as a select group, I'd like to send him a card, maybe more than a card, if it's picked up.
We can.
And I'd like to donate personally the flowers, so as a select group.
Sure.
I figure if we maybe try donating $20 each or something, send it from the Board of Selectmen, the town of Dunbarton.
Can you hear some of what you're saying?
Sure, sure.
Like to get a consensus, or, you know, to put a memorial page in the town report, just as his picture and his dedication to the town.
I'll definitely approve that as a consensus to do that as well.
Ian, can you prepare that?
Yeah.
We'll make that a goal, you have consensus, I think $20 each would be fine.
Chief, is something else?
Is that something you'd want to do in the 2019 annual report?
No, it's, it's not the, it's not a dedication.
No, no, I understand. I just, just thought, if you pass the 2019, it would be better in that report, or in 2018, just for what it's worth, just, just the.
How much longer we have before we do our report?
I'm probably gonna send it out midweek next week to get finalized and get approved.
Well, I think it's, it was a sudden, it was a last, it was a sudden announcement. I hate to wait all year, I think it'd be, I agree with Chief is saying, but the thing is, it's flashbangs right here.
There's a lot of people that probably know him in town, that if they don't know till later on, you know, might just bring it to their attention.
Yeah, I guess someone will come to this year and then put the date of past, and obviously it's a good year.
Do you want to do something on the homepage, or the hot topics, or?
It wouldn't hurt to do a lot of it, I think.
That'd be fine, too.
Maybe ask us, see if that would be okay with them, through the hours on there, something.
Okay. Hey, I'll stay.
Yep, there's one other.
We talked about that piece of property on 13, the Hammond property, so we got bought, evidently she is looking not immediately, but down the road as to how that's gonna be split up, she's working with Margaret Watkins on conservation, well, through Five Rivers, actually, to put the part that's over by Guinea Road under conservation even. She has a son that lives in Georgia that is gonna come up and try to live there and actually build a house, he's an environmental, well done a farmer, he's an environmental engineer, and he's coming up from there, and he wants to do horticultural planting, so they're gonna use that, but the piece of property that's right on Route 13 would be available, how big it is and whatever, I'm not sure, but I'd like the move that we have, Mike work with Ken and his sister, and figure out, you know, what size a piece of property is, what they're looking for, I know he's on the planning board, so, you know, whatever is involved.
Yep.
And the other thing is, of course, they're gonna get a fair market value, but if we can start to learn some of this, he can come back, report to us, and learn some of this ahead of time, maybe we know what money to put aside if we wanna purchase a piece that's right on Route 13, because, you know, it's maybe a bigger piece of footprint than we have here.
And so it's a way, yeah.
And I think eventually, we'd have to go to the voters next year, as much as we get started the planning process now.
And so you met Ken Curver the other day, so it makes it an easy.
Transition. Okay, you have, I think we have, I have no problem with that, I think we should initiate discussions. Okay, anything else, Bob?
I think that's it right now.
Okay, what time we get there? So, I'm in a dilemma, so I'm slowing down a little bit, I might take, they got a short five-minute recess, go ahead.
Another question.
Sure, sir.
You had mentioned like where Mike Guyney is on Kelsey Road.
Yes.
I brought it to mind, Pocatory Pond Road, Brian Norwood made a turnaround there.
Yes.
Is that for public to park there, or how can somebody get there in the winter time, gets the town flowers?
Fred, what he'd asked for, when we had that public meeting, we talked about making sure that there was some adequate area there to park, especially for wintertime fishing and whatnot, and what we talked about and discussed is to try and keep the turnaround open, but because that road's so wide now, Brian Norwood had no problem with parking on either side of that road, because the road is very wide if you've been down there, and that way, the town, if they were maintaining the road while you were there, could still adequately turn around their truck, without using the driveway.
So, they couldn't park on the side of the road?
Plenty of room, and he had no problem or issue with that, so we made sure to kind of cover that when we went over the approval of the road.
Okay, thanks. That was a perfect way of designing a road, it was very nice, how the width of the road.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you've been down there, but it's really, the shoulders are like included in the road system, so it's very wide.
Okay.
Just, you know, just for one thing, have everybody speak slow.
Okay, I'm gonna take a, a short recess, because we don't want, I don't want to start the public hearing before our invited guests, the public have an opportunity to arrive, so we're gonna short, we're gonna take about eight-minute recess before we adjourn, so get up and stretch your feet if you like. Leo, you wanna cut the camera for that? Oh, you can.
I can cut the audio for a short. Dave, did you say, I am putting up?
You can ask the fam, you can ask the family, but you're gonna design it.
Put it on the website.
Yes.
But this, this year, this year's town report?
Yeah.
It was a good point. Chief, bro.
I just thought it'd go a long way. You want me to write you a check?
If you pass on the money, we'll take some back here.
Council could afford to go on their own, while you guys were in there. You must have money to play.
We did, we did, we did make a policy for immediate family members for full-time town employees.
We had a policy, party.
So, out of your pockets, I mean, as a selectman, he's been in the, first of town his whole life, I don't think anybody.
We had some feedback when we tried to do it for a, immediate family member for a town employee back from the public, so.
In a sense, it comes out of the budget, because that's how he got his paycheck.
Yeah. But yeah, so we had some feedback on that, so we made it a town policy last week, John.
What's the policy?
For immediate, for a full-time employee, if an immediate family, either mother, father, siblings passed away, the town selectmen could send flowers, or, or a gift in their donation to one of the funds came through, or not, if they asked for, in the card, tried to do that, and we got some feedback, and already this month, we've had two, two to do, so.
Yeah. Something to keep in mind, this year, we're scheduled to perimulate the town lines with a ton of baux.
And we're winning for the woods, huh?
Yep. It's a few of the baux of Dunbarton, I mean.
Depends on which piece of property I'm standing on.
Yeah.
Welcome to the, oh, actually, what do you do in a town line right there, like where I'm at, it's not like you do it, except it could be there.
I actually did this for the purpose of a few residents who weren't able to make it at 7:00 asking me, so I, it's been a regular.
We'll have to try 7:15 on the next one.
Sometimes it's gonna fall, but you have to keep it on the doors.
HF Trexler, interesting, the circulation of the second floor.
There is a monument, I was.
No, what can we first send the painting of that?
The latest information that you have.
It's gonna be on one side and be on the other drawing.
I've got bits and pieces, I'm not sure I've got everything, you can, whatever you got, digitally.
Yeah, I think Adam said everything to Dave.
Okay.
I can pull back.
Email.
Well, I can do the same thing, but I think that, that nothing's changed, I think everything that we.
Okay. I think the last time you and I spoke, it was the latest, but we'll have a resend you just in case. Yeah, that, I think I've got, you know, some of the engineers' drawings, but I don't know if they're the final ones, and then whatever other docs you have, so I go in there with a clear picture. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yep. There should be copies of everyone's, they can have a spreadsheet of the budget.
This is gonna bore people in that film, Leo. Good start your dance show, you know. Stand-up comic?
Well, they're supposed to know if I do a Michael Dunbar. Well, they wanna do a segment.
Fred. Talk about Fred.
This one's. They want to do a segment on Route 13, on the Mass Line, to Oliver, to.
You guys are aware that I dropped the bomb to be repaired.
So, they stopped and moved it to the second, they stopped, these guys, this one's running around. They're not one. They're sending the other one to Dunbar. Very interesting.
Hello, yeah.
Yours? Then they also want to send. Other than that, we're going to be interviewing, we're going to be doing some. I mean, you guys know. We're not even. 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 What happens if some misses? We could mark them up. But what if Boston University does a nice, well, you better go back and recheck the figures. Then I had to bring them back for 13, and just. Bringing it back to Lee, I might back to library, so.
Security.
Somebody had to pump the gas, they get the camera open. So, it's supposed to stop, I think, more stock.
Oh, yeah, just happened.
Called the owner, they're supposed to go with the clock, and go up into the stadium. She just great job.
It was amazing, I did it, probably 15 years ago. Heating and ventilated equipment on top of the roof. Get up, sweep Hattie in there and check out the frame. Up into the rooftop, yeah. It's pretty cool.
I have no idea yet. This is what my wife's managing.
You just, you just let me know, and.
Who's noticed, watch her. But I'll take, I'll stick that one. Especially it's one of them by Hookset. When I did this, well, for seven years, oh, I didn't want to.
Sure, please, thank you.
No, the Hookset called us. When I lived like a, come from I would. Come on, he wanted for ticks on, 17.
And I'm a member of the club, so we need to get into that corner, but.
Well, Hookset, we know. Well, Hookset is not, is that a line?
No, I do send a hint of reminder, though.
And, yeah, I'm. So, we parked up the. Gates new. I finally find somebody.
I took it down. What are you doing?
He says, Griffin, I called somebody to fight up with the permission committee, though we gave him an answer.
What do you want to do?
There's a, there's a brand marker for, for Hookset. I'm Dunbar Hookset.
They give you. Mark, hook. Very fun. Dean Dalsk, he's the president.
We need to get in there again. I'm a member. Won't you for another five years? Next time we get into that, where, that would be in three years. So, on the old liners, a bunch of markers, 18, 18, as you say, it does a lot of jogging, man, go up to me, I'm too. Some of it, it's name stuff. Well, calling up to the center, it's gonna look yours, and she's afraid. She says, the date, last month, it was 18, and the bed race. Tuckler, it's like, that's like the end of the final.
This thing means. It means nothing anyway.
I read it.
The first one, yeah. There is a, John, and Jacob wants a bolt, and some big bolt, and a real bolt, and so, well, because the monument, for instance, used to be, this is, somebody yanked it all over, because they should have had more length, but not go. I mean, I put that way, we found this, but. Also, last time, somebody surveyed, some surveyers, pretty honest, pointing, saying, this was leaning. It took some 15-year. So, I don't follow my. Just to be telling you, um, we do it. It's a string before, before fully. It's a lot of the hard passes for working with town. Yeah, we can get together, do this. She needs to, it's spring before the skimmers and bugs come out, so it's important. So, we didn't last time. I think with the spring, this, the blood's, it's wet.
I don't know how wet that line is.
13, it's really wet. No, not 13.
I know, we make our plans and then.
Be backwards of all. Yeah, I get pictures. And so, Charlie's, you don't have any answers. These, like this, you can move, you're 930.
Look at it with a mirror.
You could still drive, but you noticed a little bit here and there. I have a grave, it was benching.
Use the stencils layout.
I'm gonna get a school delay. I can get your attention, we're gonna bring the public hearing to order. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please, all right, we're gonna have a public hearing now, we'll open it, open public hearing for 2019 budget and warrant. Everyone should have been given a courtesy copy of the warrant, thing is, just as an overview, we have a couple warrants on there, which would be by ballot, those will be by ballot, because we won't discuss those tonight. There was one petition warrant, which was, request was made, we assisted, but they missed the deadline, so it's been dropped, and so, it goes right to Article 5. And last year, I wanted to do a summary, but sometimes summaries don't work, so I'm gonna give some granularity here, we'll go through the budget. I'm sorry? I think is, we always strive to do better, that's all I wanna say. Okay, I'm gonna read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $2,546,940 for the general municipal operations with 250. for the general municipal operations, with two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to come from an unassigned fund bound surplus. This amount excludes all appropriations contained in the special or individual articles addressed separately. In plain English, those are the warrants which will come thereafter. So I can start with the first line item, it says executive. Under our general government, you can follow along with your spreadsheet here, executive. We got a payroll increase across the board of two percent. And that raised the, essentially, the salaries for all town employees and elected officials. In this line, we also voted to increase the town administrator by three thousand dollars. And that reflects a small increase to the executive section. You may ask, some people may ask, and the thing is, I'm gonna preempt the ask, why did we raise the town administrator? Well, things we looked at, eighteen municipalities, excuse me, nineteen municipalities of similar size, we found we were eighteenth as far as the lowest paid town administrator. So even with this raise, we remain at eighteenth to the lowest town administrator being paid. And we thought the selectmen, we thought we would raise it, be competitive a little bit, and appropriately, give appropriate compensation to our town administrator. As we go along, I'm gonna, each section we go through, if you have questions, please wait till the end of the section. So at this point, if you have any questions on this, ask me now. If not, I'm gonna move on. Elections, election and registration and vital information. Again, we have a payroll increase. Town clerk, we also have an adjusted amount for deputy town clerk.
Go ahead. Are you following the warrant, or are you following the spreadsheet?
The spreadsheet.
Okay, the numbers aren't driving the one, when you're talking with warrants.
Okay.
Just make sure you're on the right page.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Okay, about three or four years ago, it was requested by the board that elected officials be identified to, for clarity. And because the tax collector and the town clerk are controlled by RSAs, the board recommended that I implement clarity for any elected position. So should someone in the future decide to run for that position, they would be aware of what that position pays. So in the warrant itself, that is handwritten, the bottom line is the same total as the breakdown of the system. The system is just allocated in a more confined group of totals.
Okay, continuing on. So we have, as I said, an increase in the salaries for the town clerk. Lowering the budget is a major decrease, you might see, we have elections, we have fewer elections here. So being few elections, the cost for what went down pretty significantly, you know, the expenses associated with elections. But essentially, overall, the election registration line went down about seven hundred dollars. Any questions on that section? Moving on to financial administration. Again, the big payroll, the two percent payroll increase caused the payroll, caused that line to go up. We also had an increase in computer support. That's an increase in two thousand dollars, you see down, down there, from twenty-six thou, from twenty-seven to twenty-nine. Two users and one of a thousand dollars each. And if you look down at the very bottom line, we also have a major increase in education. Well, the thing is, in part of our personal plan, we have a benefit in there that's available for all our full-time employees, where they can take advantage of education that would be related to their job. In this particular case, we pay some tuition for it. Any questions on that section? Hearing none, I'll go on to the assessing department. Again, very slow increase across the board, two percent payroll increase, and that's about it. That increases about a hundred dollars. Any questions? Hearing none, moving on, legal. Now, legal, you can see what we have, some increases. The biggest increase is more money for the board of assessors. The problem that we face in Dunbar is that our utility, poll utilities, they're in a, so I would say, legal battle to lower the rates. And we're in a group of municipalities that were defending against the assault on lowering the value of the municipality of the, I mean, health homes. And that's, we're anticipating legal costs as we, again, enter this, as we go into this year. So we're building a war chest, plus it up a little bit in anticipation that we may be going to court with other municipalities. And so that's our share, we only pay a share of it, and that's for six thousand dollars. Any questions there? Yes, sir.
Is that, is that the same, same ongoing? Ongoing one with that, or is this a new one?
Well, as I understand, every couple of years, they.
Yeah, I've heard the same discussion before, I didn't know. Did it ever get resolved before?
No.
Some, well, some get settled to a point, and then they re, then they re.
Kindle it.
They kindle it.
Okay, that's, I was just curious, I thought you were.
Go ahead, Brian.
I understand on the legal fee issue that you have in here, but, so you're not bouncing up and down, is it possible to take instead of capital? Is there a bunch of stuff of that, it just, it seems to be a recurring theme every so many years with the utilities? That if there's any leftover, you know, that goes into the unfunded, you know, the surplus, for lack of a bad term.
Well, that's where we'll go if we don't utilize the money, of course.
Right, but I mean, if you don't, I mean, kinda like what you did with the Mill Foil thing, you know, just squirrel that away for the legal fund for, because it just seems to never go away, and this way, if you can budget a little bit more levelly, and if it jumps up, you can pull it out.
Once it does get, so I'm hoping it does go away, so.
Hopefully, but.
If we don't use that money, of course, it'd go back to the bottom line.
So legally, to get their fingers out of the button, actually do something with the laws, it's gonna continue on for.
I'll note that down, and the thing is, I would consider that possibly, the possibility for next year, we're still facing that issue. Thank you. Any further questions on that section? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to personnel administration. Now, personnel administration, you can see at the bottom line, it went up quite a bit. And there's a couple savings in here, but there's a couple increases in here. One of the major increases is we have an additional full-time employee, we have another police officer. Last year, that money was covered under the warrant, as we all voted, the warrant was approved. This year, the warrant no longer exists, we absorb it into the normal budget. And so that's one reason why it went up. And, but the other reason, we also have a decrease, if you see the health insurance. We worked diligently, we kept a similar plan, but we did increase the deductibles. And so it's like an incentive to stay healthy, but by cost sharing with our employees, we save some significant money. So they, they're actually paying less, but the incentive is they gotta pay the deductibles. And there's, basically, we join the majority of all industries, municipalities, in that scheme of using deductibles. Any questions on personnel administration?
Just a quick question on your health, is that through Health Trust?
Yes, it is.
Just a different plan, John.
School made that change a couple of years ago.
The Health, the Health Trust?
Yeah, to go to the same high deductible type plan, and everybody saved mine.
Exactly. I thought it was amazing that, you know, I heard that last night, saying, geez, you know, obviously, like minds think alike. Great. For the, I could say.
Oh, right.
Yeah, okay.
Library, their health insurance for their folks. I read events, I guess you guys aren't on the same page with that.
Well, the thing is, remember, library, they don't really, library doesn't fall in our personal plan per se. The thing is, they were unaware of what we were doing. And next year, we, they've already elected and signed contracts, and they're gonna work with us to what we elect to make it matching. And so I anticipate a change next year, and we have to increase communication, that has already been so noted. And we're gonna make that change as we go forward. In other words, whatever we change, we're gonna share with the library. But remember, the board of trustees of the library make that determination. But they like to, it's nice, nice to keep things fair and equitable across the town. And that's what they were shooting for. And without the knowledge, they just picked whatever they thought was, what was going on for the town. So it was no, nothing, it was not intended to give one person a better plan over the other. Okay, any other questions on personnel administration? Hearing none, I'm going on to planning and zoning. And I see the zoning board chair here, welcome, John.
Absolutely, thank you.
And he's lowered his budget this year, and the thing is, the main line that lowered the budget is zoning is required only to meet when needed. Planning is required by statute to meet every month. And John hasn't been as busy as it has been in the past. And so because of that, lowered the line of the, on in recommendation of the recorded secretary, not needed. And again, that sets up a change in the future. Any questions on planning and zoning? Okay, hearing that, I'm moving on to general government budgets. And you see a big whopper in there. The first line is a big whopper, I call it. It's a town maintenance improvement. Well, that's probably one of the biggest increases in the budget, and there's a couple reasons for that. I'm gonna just mention a few of them. We have a safety center, we have roofing problems at the safety center. It's gonna require engineering evaluation, and then corrective action, and repairing a roof is not cheap. Second thing, the library, the library was re-roofed a couple of years ago. And the company was, a company was hired by the Suck Board to do some augmentation of the rafters and supports in there. Company went bankrupt. So we're, we have to re-engineer, we lost some money in the process, we have to re-engineer some of the, we're looking at different alternatives rather than steel, maybe using other materials such as wood. And, but that's gonna have to be repaired. And just to give you a ballpark of where we're talking about, their quote was in the thirties. The two other competitive quotes were in seventies and hundreds. And so the thirty, one in thirties went bankrupt. So. Those bid is not always the best, and we learned. And, but you know, but that, in defense of the board, the company had great recommendations, and they had great references. And so sometimes we just pick, I don't know, I say, no fault of our own. But those are two examples of major expenses that we anticipate. And the thing is, in this, this week, we had, you know, expenses always crop up, and we can't ignore them. We've had two oil tanks with leaks, and those have to be addressed. And we're working on those right now, as an example.
Mike, one other thing on that, while we're talking about the town buildings there, just to make the public aware, we did make Cohen Steel whole. We had a partial payment left to that supplier vendor, and they had not been paid, and we were able to make them whole. So as a town, we've covered our debt to the suppliers at least, and kept our, kept our face value with them, and they are willing to refabricate any steel we need to do if we go that way.
And just, Cohen Steel is a local, there's a local connection there. Yes?
ASTs or USTs for the oil tanks, I assume AST, right? Above ground?
Above ground, yes.
DES has the safe tank program? I'm not sure if they will extend some installers, but there might be some money there, you might be able to utilize to help.
We don't, we don't know if we have that much cleanup to do, it's being evaluated now, but we'll note that down. But the thing is, there's always something going wrong in the town, and the maintenance line's gotta be there. And the thing is, I'll even, we have maybe a two to three thousand dollar bail or bail repair down at the transfer station, that's kind of need to. So there's a, there's never, never a dilemma when it comes to repair and stuff. All right, any questions on general government billions?
Comment on the library?
Please.
You get what you pay for?
Yes.
Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you.
Okay, cemeteries. They come in flat, and we have a new group of cemetery trustees, and the thing is, I just wanna share with them, they've got a great, we, we took the time this year to really educate them, because they had a lot of leftover money, but they had a lot of projects, and their budget originally came very high. We showed them the way to how to commit the money this year or last year, so it can be, what's the word, I'm picking up?
Encumbered.
Encumbered, so that they don't have to raise taxes this year. In other words, a lot of money was gonna go on surplus. And they had all these projects which was gonna cause the budget line to expand it quite a bit. So we showed, we shared with them how to do it and make their projects stay flatline, so I'm happy with the cemetery trustees. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on, insurance. The only thing about insurance that went down, the decrease, that's the cost of doing business. We're in a group, and the thing is, if they, again, if we have less claims, we get less, lower rates. Police Department. Again, if you look there, the police department went up a little bit, but mainly in the crime control line. Remember, that money came out, that's the salary for the full-time police officer, which was in the warrant last year. And all it is, is in the budget this year, that's why it went up.
Just making notes of it, we did reduce the part-time.
And the part-time line is reduced this year because, if you recall, the part-time officer is the one that became full-time. And so chief offset one with the other. And so if you look at the chief, he also has some, there's a couple other things that worked on, but he, of all the, of all the department chiefs, he, I have to say, he scrutinizes his budget to squeeze every nickel he can out of his budget. And he worked on his radio, he was even the lower the budget on radio repair, so that, very good chief, thank you. All right, fire department. And I think it's equally as commendable, fire chief, basically, his, his expenses are due to basically payroll increase, and increase in operating expenses, i.e. mutual aid. We're in mutual aid with different communities across this area. Mutual aid costs go up, we have to pay it, we're gonna need, get assistance from them, and we provide them assistance. And again, the chief, I salute you too, for keeping a good control on your budget. And I promise you this year, we are looking at your roof. If passed. Okay, building department. Building department, you can see there's a lot of ups and downs there, and I just wanna share that there was an increase of the building inspector. Building Inspector has been very busy this year, and we increased the hours by request of the administrator for the building department to give more hours to do inspections, to work on admin projects, to get the office back to where it should be. We had a downtime in there when we were out, without an administrator. We had a less than desirable employee who did not perform to our standards, we let go, we brought a new administrator in, and the office is, I'm going to big overhaul. One of the things she recommended, and the board fully agreed with, was the inspector is going, he drives to work and goes to inspection sites. And so we gave him a mileage allowance. And we based upon what mileage he did for the year, he kept a logbook of it, and we gave him a budget of a thousand dollars in that budget line to help him in his mileage. Because he's gotta go from, from site, not from home, to here, it's when we get from here to go to the different buildings for inspections. And that, we thought that was appropriate for him. And I think the building department is doing wonderful things, and I think I look forward to, we support completely that budget line. Any questions on the building department? Oh, come on, I was ready for it.
Is that department revenue neutral?
No.
It's not, okay.
Because the thing is, for information, they do collect fees for building, building permits, et cetera, but not revenue.
Okay.
To answer that, Jeff, to answer some of that, we do have the fees coming back that we have every year, but we split those fees coming back for the.
Well, that's conservation, current use.
So we have current use penalties, so if that all came back as part of the new building process, it might be more neutral, but those get split with the conservation, and the town gets half of those, so.
So currently, our building department expenses are greater than the building department revenue?
Yeah, it's typically about fifty percent.
Some towns, their revenue is much higher than their expenses, it's more of a building tax.
Oh, yeah, they have tax.
Building permit fee, so.
We did, we did cut the increase of hours that they requested, and then gave the mileage compensation, so we, they asked for more hours than we actually gave them. We cut that back, but we did agree upon the mileage because we was using a personal vehicle for the town.
And we're following the federal reimbursement rate, about fifty-eight cents per mile.
Fifty-four. Yeah, twenty-five.
Fifty-five.
Somewhere over there.
Stand right, thank you, Bob. Brian, go ahead.
Where is the mileage, in the building inspector line?
Yes.
Why wouldn't you break that out as a separate thing, because it's not really salary, it's a, it's more of a stipend sort of thing, and it's variable depending on the.
Right.
That doesn't, the, that particular line does not mean that it's going to be expended completely, it's just a combined. I mean, I think over the past few years, the board has asked me to condense the accounts, not to break them out further, because it does add to the.
I can help answer that too. What we did, Brian, is we went back and looked at, we had them add up the hours that they thought that they did the traveling over a certain mode weeks back. And what we did is, we took that thousand dollars and knew that we would most likely be under that, especially with less development going on with some of the bigger ones already gone through. So we put that thousand dollars in there, part of the budget line, hoping to come in under that and.
Oh, I understand. My point though is, salary, FICA, Medicare, that stuff, that's all payroll sort of thing. A mileage reimbursement is a stipend, it's completely separate. I know.
Does he?
It's all broken up because now you're mixing apples and oranges. I know in the state, we have, it's all broken up because now you're mixing apples and oranges.
I guess questions, does software allow us to break it down into another line?
Yes, it does. You hit the same account, it just is posted to a different.
Just for tracking purposes, so you know that like.
For granularity, we can do that for the future. We can make that change.
But don't nickel and dime it either.
No.
No need to.
A couple of keystrokes is not going to cost you a whole lot.
Okay, any other questions on building department? Hearing none. Emergency management. We budgeted $1,000. And what's emergency management? If the, if we ever had an emergency where we needed a, the community center would be the location we would basically support. You say, what, we expended $1,000, what did we do for that $1,000? We didn't have any ice storm this year. Or the chief is responsible for maintenance generator. And the maintenance generator directly support of the, of that building. And so we expend that money appropriately to support that building, whether it be electoral support by the generator. So that's where it goes and we continue the budget as such for that. Any comments on emergency management? Hearing none, moving to highway department. And my only criticism of the highway, of the highway department, their budget is that we had the 2% increase and the highway director decided to incorporate the pay raise into his operating budget to absorb it. And so it remains flat. I just want to say for the record, everyone usually comes to this meeting, they always ask, when is my road getting paid and getting fixed? There's a springtime meeting every year and it's a public hearing. And that's where determinations and priorities are set. And so everyone's open to the public and that's where we take that input, not at this meeting. And for the record, Gray Road is going to undergo repairs next. Now it's decided at the public hearing. And Jeff, do you want to elaborate anymore or did I catch it right?
Yeah, and just the things, although we are going to probably end up having to revisit some of our decisions given what's been happening while it arose with this, this season of winter slash spring. And we have a lot of asphalt, it's taken a severe toll, so we have to adjust things a little bit. But that's the grand scheme, yes.
And within this budget. Within this budget, I was going to say, there's a lot of shifting of money due to weather and the weather has a larger impact. And so he's got, we allow him to have the latitude to do the right things for the town.
When is that meeting? I'm going to be here this year.
Usually pick you up.
Oh, that's right, John, thank you.
All right, moving on, moving on.
Sucking around a bunch of load problems.
Highway department's flat. Yep. Solid waste disposal, all right. The cost more, we have, the cost more to pay the people, we gave them a 2% pay raise across the board. And municipal waste, cost more to recycle and cost more to do everything down there. So that's not going away and that's a requirement. However, I just want to say with that, some, we made some decreases in the budget as far as maintenance. We watched that maintenance. We already got a hit in two months in the year for a $3,000 bailer, potential hit. So we monitor that closely with the transfer station manager. Just for the record, just, I'm going to say it in the town report, you'll see it. But the thing is, we are re-looking at what we recycle and what we don't recycle because it's costing us more to recycle and they throw it in the garbage. And so we're going to do a meeting with some key individuals and we may not be recycling as much as we did before. It's just, it's cost ineffective and the thing is, there's no recycling actually going on. We're actually, have to spend money to recycle, doesn't make sense. Usually when we recycle, we get money back. And it's not happening with all products across the board. You may hear about it in the newspapers, glass is one of them. Glass is no longer being desirable by many people. And then there's whole, whole problems with plastic. We're going to talk about that later. But go ahead, any questions on this budget?
Last year, I recall you guys were having discussions about potentially changing the way we do trash in the town as far as like looking at, you know, a different like way of doing it.
Well, the thing is, under discussion this year, we will be looking at.
Not just recycles, but I mean, the whole, the whole process, I thought you guys were looking at.
We did, we did look back, we got a favorable report.
Right. We worked with the, we had inspection by the NRRA. And they came back to us and they commended us for a lot of things we were doing. And they talked about the, for example, the truck we have. And should we continue using the truck? And they actually were very favorable of the way we use our, the heavy Mack call. However, but we're going to be looking at that again this year. We already made an agreement, we have consensus that we want to look at that again to see if it's cost effective still. Because maintaining a truck and running a truck diesel, it can't be running one day a week. It's got to be, it's got to be maintained and actually turned on quite a bit.
Absolutely.
And because of that, we're going to, we're going to look at that. And the thing is, that's on the agenda of the project for this year. So to answer your questions, yes.
Their recommendations were very minor, Brian. So we incorporated some of the smaller ones, I think. And they were very minor, we were surprised that we're more of an overhaul ask for.
And just to give you a heads up there, as far as glass is going, they're looking into using glass on asphalt.
I was going to say, actually, right now, we transport hours to New London, which grinds it and uses that in, you know, in the road base material, so. But that gets to be an expensive thing also for us. Because it's one, it's a trip up and back, you know. And, you know, to talk about the trucking part is if we could, if you could find a reputable hauler that could meet your dates, that probably might be less expensive for us than having our own vehicle that, well, you spent a lot of money to paint it last year, it needs work again this year. And it seems like that's becoming a little bit problematic as far as trying to keep the truck up, you know. It's still a point where is it worth the investment?
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions on trash? Okay, moving on. Welfare. Just to let you know, we have a new welfare director in town. And it has completely overhauled. We had a 10-year-old welfare plan that we almost died when we looked at it, it was so outdated. Major changes in the welfare office as far as administration of that. And it's being done with the appropriate visibility. I'll leave it at that. The only major change we made, we do donate monies to two organizations which support us immensely, support residents immensely, the Salvation Army and the Dunbar Community Church. And so we, in the past, we've given complete $2,000 to Salvation Army. We cut off a little bit more, a little bit out of that to give some to the Dunbar Community Church here because they run a food bank. And the food bank supports our residents directly, so we're going to support them. And other than that, okay, yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Just informational question, this is Dunbar Church. Is that both churches in town or just a congregation?
Just the congregation which runs the food bank.
Okay. I didn't, because the way it says Dunbar Church, I wasn't sure.
Understood. Good question, though.
Maybe you want to change it to food bank, so there's no question about it. You know exactly what it's going for.
We can do that. Good, good recommendation, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the welfare? Hearing none, moving on. Parks and recreation. Small change there. If you look at it, in the same line, we have Old Home Day as far as in parks and recreation also. What we did, they usually run excursions, run a bus for a small, select group of people and they take them down to Boston, they take them down for visitations and a recreation visit. It was canceled this year because they didn't get enough people signing up for it. So we're concerned about that. And so we dropped the dollars for that excursion trip. They had a few trips planned, but they're not executing on the money. So we dropped it $500 and we're taking that $500 and we're plus it up, Old Home Day. The response, we had a rainy day and the Old Home Day was a very great success. It benefited children, hundreds of people versus maybe 20 people. And so we thought a little more money towards Old Home Day would be better and rather than go into a small excursion to pay for a bus for about 10, 20 people. And so that was a, we're going to look at that this year and see where it goes. A lot of people also asked about, what about the old fireworks we had in the past? That's been addressed, the thing is, it's more problematic than you think and we're not going to go down that path because there are too many problems, whether it be location, safety, et cetera. But the thing is, but essentially, it's a flat budget, but we're just a little shifting within the budget line. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Library. Okay, you may say this is huge increase. But the thing is, the biggest change here, the library had a part-time library director and moved it to full-time. And so from last year, it looks like it's a huge increase. Yes, it is. But if you go back two budgets ago, they were budgeted approximately the same amount of money, a little bit less. But they had part timers in there. And so rather than hire part timers, the library trustees elected to make the library director a full-time employee. And so it looks like a huge increase, but if you look back several years ago, it's really not a huge increase. It's a huge increase from one year to the next.
And also provided health insurance.
Yeah, and the health insurance. When you go, when you go, when you go have a full-time employee, you got to remember those incidentals. Social Security, FICA, health insurance, and all those other incidentals, you just don't, there's costs that are always hidden that you don't want to forget about. But that's the main reason for the increase there. And out of the board's perspective on the library, the library director's been doing an outstanding job and I'm glad they made her full-time because she brings, he's brought a lot of life back to the library and with the many programs he has. Comments and questions? Okay, hearing none. We went through the budget. And if you look at, I'm going to bring your attention to the, we have a summary page here. It looks like so. Go to the summary page. We talk about what's going on with a global picture now. From 2018, if you look on the top line, one line down of the total budget, 2018 to 2019 went up around $134,000. Well, that's, you got about 5.5, 5.5% increase, a little bit over than that. So that goes up a little bit. And then if you go down a little bit more, you see lapsing funds. We had from excess revenues, now this is, we predict revenues as we go forward, but we had a little bit more come in this year. So we had $237,000 and change that came in as excess revenues. And lapsing funds from 2018, this is what we budgeted, this is money coming back to us which wasn't spent. It was only $61,000. So our budget was almost spot on. So I thank my colleagues here on the board for really crafting a great budget last year. So we take that money, that's excess, or so I would say, surplus in the year, we're going right down the middle. So we had close to $300,000, so it's $299,511. Now, what we're doing with that excess surplus, we're taking $255,000 and we're applying it towards.
Our overall budget.
Our overall budget. In attempt to keep our budget flat. And so we are not going to, and then if you look to the, just to the right of that, the warrants. We have 2019, 2018. If all the warrants are passed, it would collect about 20 cents less this year than last year. This is a few warrants. And so bottom line, we're going down to the bottom, if you go all the way down to the bottom. Okay, so we have lapses to the general fund, $55,000. I'm going to talk about that figure in a moment after we take out 255. So we have lapses in the general fund, only $55,000. You say, geez, that's only a little bit lapses to the general fund, but I'm going to get to that in a moment. And so we look at our budget now, we subtract our use of surpluses. With the proposed revenues, we have the 19 budget of 2.5 million. Subtract our proposed revenues, or we look at it conservatively, about 1.1 million. If you use a surplus of about $255,000, we do the adjustment. Based upon the 2018 assessment, impact to the taxes is $3.74. You add, if all the warrants pass, we add 66 cents to that. So we're talking about a tax impact rate of $4.40. Last year was $4.60. So what does that mean? We're going down about 20 cents. Now, that $55,000, I told you to keep that in mind. I just want to let you know that we're the contingency, the town side is a contingency for both the school department and the town side. We are the bank, you might say. We have to keep some money in savings as a contingency fund. I call it a rainy day fund. Something catastrophic after the school or anywhere in town, the garages, transfer station. It's anything that we would need money for. The DRA, the Department of Revenue recommends we retain about 5%. Last year, we retained about 5.8%. So we're putting about another $55,000 into it. So we're going between, between 5.8 and 6% of our retained fund. They recommend anywhere from 5 to 17%. 17% is kind of high. And you say, why is that kind of high, should we have it that high? Well, our auditors came back and said, look at, look at what we had, about 5, close to 6%. Said, you guys are doing great. You have one liability in town which is the school bond and that's about all we have in town. So from a fiscal management issue, we're doing fantastic. We don't need that much in reserve because we're not basically in debt. And so we feel comfortable, every year, we looked at it this year, we put, hey, there's no reason why we can't take the surplus that we had in revenues and apply it to the taxes. And that was a decision of the board.
Just to follow up on what Mike has said there, if you looked at those dollar values, like when I became selectman, that rainy day fund was brought down to a very, very low amount, much lower than the recommended amounts. And we brought that up substantially last year and still were able to put a lot of money towards the.
So right now, it stands at $477,000, it's going to be plus up by 55K.
We were still able to put a lot of money back into our town buildings to upgrade them. And this year, we're following that same trend. We added additional $50,000 to keep upgrading our town buildings so they don't get in disrepair and we have huge expenses on our hands. And we're still able to increase this fund. And what we want to do is continue to increase it lovely and slowly and put as much of that excess money back towards our town budget to keep it as flat as possible. And that, it's our second year we've been able to do that and we hope to do it. And we're adjusting, we're going to go over revenues next, but we're adjusting our revenues so we look ahead and see different projects that can be built out in the town or not built out. And this year, we should have substantially less build out because on Grapevine Road, the old local estates is sold out. And so we're looking for less building permits, so we're going to get less revenues back at the town. So we've adjusted our budget for that, try and follow through and keep it as steady as possible.
Now, Dave alluded to revenues, let's move on to revenues now. And again, it's revenues, you can, if you overestimate your revenues, you're basically in trouble at the end of the year. Because if you raise your budget the wrong way, thinking they're going to get those revenues in and then you run out of money, then we're all over it. Then we have to go back to the taxpayers, no one wants to go back to the taxpayers.
Or surplus.
Or surplus. But the first item is land use changes. Last year, we budgeted $60,000 coming in. We got 97, we're off, no problem there. But you notice this year, we're only budgeting $40,000. Why? Less development, there's no new subdivisions coming in, no land use change there. As Dave said, the 22 lots are gone. Going further down, well, we got a little increase there. Thank you, Linda. Motor vehicle, everyone's buying new cars. Keep buying new cars, people, keep buying new cars. Building permits, that's hit or miss. We got about, we budgeted 30, came in at 32 this year. Now we're thinking about 20. I think that may be a little higher, but I don't want to overshoot it. Everything else is flat, I think, everything else is flat. But we're producing, we're going to get a little more revenues, but there's nothing that's going to jump out like we had this past year. We're not going to get several hundred thousand dollars in surplus, so.
There was one more item, there's the rent of town properties. We only have one rental property in town, it's down on Kippon Road. And we were made whole after, after the continuation of the payment of the rent on that building. So that, that went up a little bit. So we expect it to stay at that level now.
Any questions, any questions on revenues? Again, it's almost like pulling out your magic ball, but you got to make an educated guess and you can't overshoot. Thing is, now the thing is, what coming is going to be, we have a reevaluation.
2020.
2020, that's coming up. We put money into a, into a warrant every year for the reevaluation. And, but I think reevaluation is a shell game. You know, your house is worth more, you pay less in taxes. Your house is worth less, you pay more in taxes. And so it's, it's something that's going to be done, but it's an equalization process, but it's required by the state. So we have to do that in 2020. Okay. Any questions on the overall budget before I move on to the other warrants? Thank you, okay, let's move on. Okay, item number six, if you go back to the warrants. Item number six, see if the town will vote to raise the sum, raise an appropriate the sum of $14,000 to be added to the reevaluation capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and as summarized in the capital improvement plan. I just alluded to that. Required by the state. So we, that's money we have to pay out.
You'll see that one sitting here as a warrant article every year since I've been a selectman. I think a lot longer than that, so.
Yeah, any questions on that? Go ahead.
We're going to revalue the entire town in one tax year rather than have a rolling type.
I think they start in the 2019, but they won't apply or implement the changes until all areas have been picked out.
In one year. In one, one year.
Yep, and then, and they're due in twenty-twenty.
We do it every five years, huh?
Yep.
Is this gonna be statistical, or is it gonna be an actual...
They're doing statisticals.
Please, statistical.
Yep, yep.
Any further questions on that? Moving on to article seven. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and summarized in the capital improvement plan. Folks, the thing is, uh, it's, it's a necessity, life and safety, there's no, I have no issues with that. And I just like to say that, uh, the thing is, a lot of times, I've seen town meetings, some people wanna come in and be heroes. I'm gonna see if they can lower that ten thousand dollars, we'll save ten thousand dollars in taxes.
A hundred thousand.
Yeah, sometimes a hundred thousand. Um, but in thi, in this case, the thing is, either we pay for it incrementally, or we're gonna be stuck with a huge bill, and we gotta replace the fire truck, and the fire truck is aging. So, go ahead.
How much is in the fund now?
Got that information, stand by.
Uh, yeah, we have enough.
So it has to reduce it over the course of time.
Sixty new truck around four hundred.
Fire department?
Go in. Yeah, probably looking for some five, probably.
Fire department currently has, um, a hundred and eighty-three, five, sixty-four as of December thirty-first, so we'll be adding another forty thousand to that.
That should be somewhere around three, three hundred thousand right now, if we're gonna pay for it when it was in the actual CIP back in the day.
He's gonna squeeze another year out of it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the question is, when, what's the schedule for replacing that truck? When is it?
Twenty-one's our goal, but, you know, we, there's no way we'll have enough money, but at least we'll have enough for down payment, and we could do, maybe a lease purchase, there's, there's a lot of options out there, but, um, you know...
Does it make sense to increase this warrant article to, to get us a little closer to where we need to be?
I would say, uh, if we were a hundred percent convinced on the purchase, uh, purchase, and so there are new, uh, with heavy truck and heavy machinery and fire trucks included, there are different options we can pursue, uh, leases included. And so we don't have, uh, a definitive plan of which we're gonna go. So I don't wanna collect too much money from taxpayers, and then we end up in the lease, and we're sitting on a pile of money.
We look for the department head to give us...
We size that one, you know, so...
We look for the department head to give us the feedback on the amounts there, and then we kind of go back and forth a little couple times on it, but that's the amount that the chief had requested.
And the thing is, for the record, we did not lower any of the warrants as requested by the, uh, by the departments.
A lot of municipalities are going to lease.
Any further questions on that, on article seven? Moving on to article eight then. To see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be added to the highway vehicle capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and summarized by the cap improvement plan. I guess we're on the same questions, Lee. How, how much do we have in there now?
Highway curbing has a hundred and thirty-six thousand fifty-six dollars.
Okay.
And we'll be adding seventy thousand to that.
And to let you know, the, uh, that truck is being pursued this year.
Yes.
And, uh, what we're gonna be doing is our request for proposals, and, uh, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll speak to the next article, then we'll move right on. To see if, article nine, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to purchase a new international truck for the highway department, and to fund this appropriation by withdrawing up to a hundred and seventy-one thousand from the highway capital reserve fund, no amount to come from taxes. So we're putting a little money in, but we're all taking it out.
Article nine is based on article eight passing.
Correct.
In article nine, I asked if it could be reworded to just appropriate that money instead of raise and appropriate, but getting a legal response back. They said to, to leave it as the general wording, raise and appropriate, so...
Brian?
Correct me here on the, what was the number in that?
This is dated a few months back, so I'm assuming, but we did run a report, Jeff and I, and this thirty thousand put him over the hundred and seventy-one.
Why don't you just make it one warrant article, and just pull out what you have, and just add the thirty, and so, instead of having two warrant articles for the same thing, just have one.
Well, one, one raises it, one takes it out.
Yeah, I understand, well, what you do, you're raising the money, you're throwing it in there, and then he takes it all out. You can do the same thing all in one warrant article, you can just raise and appropriate the amount of money, a hundred and some odd come out of the capital reserve, and thirty thousand comes from taxation.
I don't think that was even discussed. Go ahead.
Um, I, I like the way it's set up here, it gives the town two choices. First of all, do you wanna continue to put money into the fund for this equipment? The second choice is, do you wanna buy this truck? And if you put them both together, and the warrant article fails, you're not putting money into your capital reserve for the same article you're gonna have next year. We're moving in this direction on some of our school projects as well, putting money in a capital reserve every year, and then having a choice whether you wanna take money out to buy certain things.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff on that, because even if warrant article eight passes and article nine doesn't pass, doesn't mean that town didn't want to appropriate the thirty thousand dollars. If you put them all in one warrant article, you've missed that year for that thirty thousand dollars.
And I've learned more about truck purchases now. That money, one seventy-one, is not a, uh, it may be a few dollars more, we may have to absorb that within the operating budget somehow, in, as I say, Jeff's operating budget somehow. Go ahead, yes, sir.
Do you wanna be locked into one brand of truck though?
No.
We did reword that, and I haven't gotten on these copies yet, but we did take the brand of truck out.
It was just, uh, a new truck, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask that question next, Joe, thank you.
I did fix it in the town report, I missed it on the...
We've talked about it.
Yeah.
Red truck?
Yeah.
Red truck.
Thank you for, good, good catch, good catch, gentlemen. All right, so for the, yes, yes, sir.
What, uh, which truck? What will it be used for?
Uh, highway department, plowing, moving gravel, dirt.
It's our, it's our six-wheel dump truck, Frank, it's the green one that you see around town, with the wind on it and whatnot, that's the truck. It's not...
Big one.
Two thousand fifteen, we bought a new, uh, I'm gonna call it glorified one-ton type, type truck for everyday work, and, uh, for guys to work out. This is, uh, one for plowing, sanding, hauling dirt, stuff like that, it's a heavy dump truck.
Almost twenty years old, right?
The one we have, the one we have now is, uh, is twenty years old. So we've had a good life out of it.
Are we surplusing it, or are you gonna hold on to it as a spare?
We have actually, myself and the selectman have talked about possibly holding on to it to have a spare, 'cause it really doesn't have a lot of value. It's not, it's not a piece of junk, but, you know, it needs to be replaced. So we're, we're kinda leaning that way, just to have it as a spare.
So it gets... I don't wanna have any questions, are we getting an automatic or manual? We already discussed that.
Yeah, I don't care. And we had, and, and to back Jeff up on that, we had a couple of issues where some people's vehicles weren't quite ready to start the plowing when the season started.
And breakdowns.
And then we had, we had an accident with one of our town, um...
Subcontractors.
Subcontractors, which we're very fortunate this time to be using those subcontractors to save a lot of money of having a lot of town trucks and town employees, and having that as a backup truck.
And we, we hear about it, when a truck goes down, we hear about it.
But anyway, so to answer your question, Brian, that's where we're at right now, we're kinda leaning that way. We may, we might keep it for a year and reassess it, you know, we'll say, all right, maybe we don't need it, but...
Kinda lead to my next question now, I mean, are you gonna keep the iron off of that one, put on the new one, or are you gonna get the, all brand-new iron, new spread or everything? Box, like, bro.
If, right now, the way the industry is going, if we order this truck, let's say the day after town meeting, we'll be very fortunate if we have it by the end of the year, two thousand and nineteen, just the economy, you know...
We build our own, so it's in the state, right?
Yeah, so I mean, we're gonna be running this truck next season.
Okay.
For a period of time, at least.
Any further questions on the truck? All right, hearing none, we're moving on. All right, Jeff, don't go away. To see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for additional costs associated with paving. This has been a, uh, a consistent warrant, uh, it's an all-time favorite, um, but it basically pays for the paving project that he elects to do for the, for the year, or repairs for the year.
Now, you'll see on that warrant article, we took out, we were designated roads in years past that we were working on, and, um, we took that out, so that gives Jeff some leeway. If he's gonna start on railroad, and he looks like other roads need repair throughout the year, there's washouts or floods, he can kind of use that money where he needs to throughout the town. Well, last year, what happened is, we, every year for three years, we'd have used Grapevine Road as a specific project, well, when all the numbers came in at the end of the top coat and shoulders and all that, we were at like ninety thousand dollars, and we had ten thousand dollars left in that warrant article. But it was tied specifically to Grapevine Road, so the selectman told me, no, you can't spend it on anything else, it's gonna go back to the budget. So we thought, to try to, we raised and appropriated that money for purposes of paving, that we made out a more general statement, 'cause, you know...
Used elsewhere. Okay, any further discussion?
That was a theory.
Any further discussion?
Jeff promised he's gonna pave my road this year.
Or yours and Jeff's. All right. All right, uh, item eleven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the transfer station vehicle for the capital qu, oh, the equipment, capital reserve fund previously established for the purpose and summarized in the capital improvement plan. Just for the record, um, this, this is, this is nothing new, um, we used some of the money this past year, we have a new, uh, new truck ordered for the transfer station. I thought it would be here sooner, but again, I get educated on how they make trucks for, for industry. They make it in batches, and the thing is, you gotta, you just can't go to the lot and pick one up, you gotta wait till the, uh, we're under a state contract, we gotta wait for the, they run to go through, and then we're part of a group. A second?
It's all timing.
Exactly. And, uh, so our order is in, and, uh, but we gotta continue to this fund, uh, to fund this for future.
Let's speak to that one.
Please, I'm gonna have Dave speak a little bit.
Uh, this one has been brought down to twenty thousand dollars because we just purchased that new vehicle. This number had been higher in years past, and in talking with the department head on there, he felt comfortable with starting out at this lower amount at this period of time, and if he hits another vehicle or something, we just had the big, um, the slide-on body truck worked on heavily last year, and spent a lot of money on that, and now we have the brand-new truck ordered in, we got an additional year out of the truck that wasn't there, so...
And I got a special deal for anyone who wants an old pickup.
So we felt comfortable bringing that amount down in this department, at least to start with, and see how it goes from various years after this.
How much is in the fund now?
Just enough to cover that truck that we purchased.
Right, so it's basically zero to back out with the purchased truck.
It's got like forty dollars, or the rest is committed.
All right, any further questions on the, uh, the transfer station equipment? Okay, moving on to item, article twelve. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand and ten dollars to be added to the basis, invasive plant species capital reserve fund previously established, this sum is to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to come from taxes. If you remember, this is, this is, uh, this is the controversial one every year, milfoil. And if you recall last year, at the last year's town meeting, we created a fund where, uh, we appropriated money for milfoil control, and if we didn't use it, the money could be moved into, uh, a fund like this, and rather than go into the general fund. So it kinda puts a restriction on how the selectman can use funds in which are not committed. It actually commits this money to future treatment of milfoil, so we don't have to raise as much down the road from taxes. And if, milfoil's been, every year, we accumulate more money from milfoil, but, and if we don't, don't use it, it goes into the back of the general fund. Now, it's put back into a fund specifically for this purpose, so we don't have to raise more, keep raising more and more taxes. But it is tax money, the money that's gonna raise. Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, is the amount, sixteen thousand and ten dollars, is that money that was previously appropriated for milfoil that was not spent?
Yes.
Invasive plant species.
Sorry.
But anyway, the, uh, the other thing is, we got a report back that we have zero milfoil in Gorm Pond now. And, um, we're gonna keep applying for the grant, you'll see on the next warrant article, but they've also checked our other ponds in town, so all ponds in town are now clean, uh, one hundred percent, no sign in the other ponds, so that's, that's huge.
We got some in the fire pond by the fire station.
Oh, no.
Plugged up our trainers.
Keep it there.
Downstream.
Don't use that water to put any fires on it.
Turn the truck around.
I wanna know who put a boat in there, carrying that in that pond.
Yes, I think. All right.
So is the sixteen thousand and ten dollars, uh, the current balance in that fund?
No, that's, no, that is, that is surplus money, but was not utilized last year, because we had a great year.
Right.
There's one dollar in that fund.
There's one dollar in the fund right now. So now, we plus up to sixteen.
I need ten dollars.
I'm sorry?
Well, I need the ten dollars, give them around.
That's, that's what was raised and, and...
This is just putting it into that fund. This is the leftover balance. For last year, yeah. You notice, yeah, zero tax impact, we already had the impact last year.
So it's kinda tied to the next warrant article, which...
To see, article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the milfoil control in Gorm Pond, and to authorize the selectman to accept the grant from the state of New Hampshire, DES, in the amount of four thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, known as the variable milfoil control grant, and to withdraw one hundred and thirty dollars from the assigned fund balance into, from the assignment, and to withdraw twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars from the invasive plant species capital reserve fund established for this purpose, no amount to come from taxes. So in other words, milfoil continues, so there's gonna be a, potentially some monitoring, some divers down there, and the money which was raised last year for the control was not all utilized, it's been thrown into that fund. Now, when, rather than coming, taking it from taxes, which we already took it from taxes the previous year, we're just gonna use the same money this year from, instead of raising taxes.
And another part that goes with that is, this allows the town of Dunbar to get the grant money that goes along with that milfoil control, which we've been in it since the beginning, since they offered that grant money, and without doing this portion of it, we'll, we get dropped out of there. So, right now, Dunbar has gotten that grant money every year, and by staying in this program, we're gonna continue to receive that grant money shown on that warrant article. And it's just to stay on the list, 'cause once we come off the list, it's difficult to get back on and receive those monies. And they may not use much money, but you're appropriating money and whatever surplus there is left, again, ends up going back through the same process, to keep doing the same things. But it gives us a chance to, you know, access a little bit of grant money at the same time. And I think you'll see that over the years, milfoil, the price of it and taking care of it, has gone up and down, and up and down, and a lot of voters aren't very happy at the meeting when they see that milfoil amount. Some people live on that pond and whatnot, but overall, we've maintained it, and I think that having that fund will allow it to average out over the years, so that hopefully we're not seeing big increases on it.
There is a little disconnect between, uh, the idea that there's zero milfoil in any of the ponds except the fire pond, um, and, and then needing to raise another group of money. Um, and it's helpful to hear about the dollar amounts, but it may be even more important to hear about what, how, how the money will be used at the pond this year.
Yeah, there'll be someone speaking.
But to answer your question right now, okay, there's some of the money's used for divers for inspection and to, and eradication by physical, physical removal. Some of it, if, 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 if the divers recover, find there's more milfoil than they can, they'll do a chemical treatment. So, chemical treatment is potential. Divers are definite to basically exam, inspect and potentially eradicate by physical removing it. Those are the two big ones.
The other thing is, if the only pond in town that has milfoil is the little fire pond, is there any thought then given to trying to get it out of there?
First time we hear of it tonight.
Actually, kind of pretty planted it.
I'll go to the back row.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, invasive species anyway, so it's any invasions, invasive species, so it could be, uh, the fire pond for the milfoil, but it also could be actually had some kind of issue with, uh, uh, that bamboo that grows all over the place, that's an invasive, you know what I'm saying? So, the money isn't there just for, for a pond.
Right, and the thing is, we were, we were painstakingly, uh, work, used the words last time to, uh, so we wouldn't be selected just milfoil. Let's say something comes down, something comes down the road, we need to do something quickly and it's not milfoil, but it's a, it's a plant. Give us some latitude to use that money. Go ahead, Fred.
Would that affect the, uh, the variable milfoil control grant if you use it for other things?
It could. It could.
Uh, no, not if, if you apply what they're requesting for the grant.
Oh, no, true, no, but the thing is, if we apply, if we don't apply for the grant and they, we have to match some, we have to put some matching money to the grant and have some money available to match the grant. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay. We have a subject matter expert here and, uh, much more than I have. Yes, sir.
As we have things set up, uh, we've got, we've got the fund, but to expend from the fund, you need a warrant article.
Correct, correct.
So, um, the fund could cover a, a bunch of different things, but if, if you were gonna take seriously the fact that there's milfoil in the, uh, in the fire pond that is actually a nuisance, um, you'd need a warrant article to deal with that.
Correct.
We'll have to work on that next year, cause these ones are pretty well wrapped.
The thing is, the beauty about the fire pond, the thing is, the problem is, you don't have recreational boulders, so that's the main reason we get milfoil spread. There's no recreational boulders going in there and traveling over to the warm pond. At least not, not a guy, no one. Jeff, go ahead.
Um, two, two questions.
First one is, what's the $130?
Why is that in there? It doesn't seem to make much sense.
We had a donation of $130. We accepted it under the RSA.
Yep.
And the request of the donation from the Gorham Pond was to make sure that we give this to you, that the selectmen apply it through there.
Okay.
They raise that money. The name for the Gorham Pond, they would actually raise that money.
Okay. Second question. Um, often on the school district warrant, when we're taking money out of capital reserve or something, we usually word the article to withdraw up to a certain amount, so that if you do not need all of that for the year's expenses, it stays in the fund. Would you wanna consider that here? If you, if you're not sure you're gonna need all $16,928 this year, you could word it withdraw up to, and then that would allow you to keep some of that $12,566 in the fund instead of, again, next year having to put money back in and then take it back out again.
Does that change the grant? Is that why we've got that wording in there?
I think, I think you need to have that for the wording, because we're not gonna know until probably April or May what the bloom is gonna be, so we, we have to plan for the worst.
Right.
But then if nothing else happens, this whole process will repeat next year.
It goes back into their fund anyway, so...
Right, it goes back into the milfoil, the variables invasive species fund, and then the state money goes back to the state, but we're still in the loop and we have, it's better to appropriate it that way.
So in prior years, Jeff, that money would've went back into our general fund for excess revenues and...
Yep.
And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually, uh, D E S will have the person come out and make an evaluation and estimate a cost, I believe, right? That's how we write our warrant articles.
Right.
On a projected cost or what it might cost. And then, like this last time, we had a surplus because it never got to that amount, so we had a number of surplus and we received a grant from the state that was comparative to what we invested.
Yeah, the D E S gives us the numbers to go by. They, they kinda, it's actually a single point of contact, but she's in, in touch with everything around the state, so she has the best figures available. And also, we get, we, uh, put out requests for divers and things like that, so they have to be state certified and not just regular scuba divers, cause they have to work in, uh, in pairs to actually suck up the entire plant and remove it from wherever it's found. So that's all coordinated through, and, and actually, she'll be the one, probably April, May timeframe, to come down and see if we have any, any kind of bloom, as well as we'll try to get some rewatches out there to see if we have...
But I, I guess that the only, the recommendation Jeff's making is just to change the wording and say up to, so in other words, if it comes back, we only need 12, we don't withdraw the full 16, leave it for...
Sure.
I think that'd be okay. I think that's gonna affect the grant, you know?
Right, if, if you don't need it, keep it in the fund rather than taking it out and then having to put it right back in again next year.
That's a good recommendation.
I think that sounds like it.
Your name for the record for a report?
Other purchases, maybe.
Robert Leonard Gorham Pond Drive. Thank you, we only, we're the only person committed, you don't have, right?
We don't do this year, we make, we'll seriously consider that for a future language.
Cause I have used it for equipment purchases, up to, which is a little bit different, so...
Yeah, D R A, you know, may wanna weigh in on something.
Yep, I could ask.
All right, uh, the last two articles, any more, I'm sorry, any more questions on the milfoil or the invasive species? Okay, thank you. Um, last two articles are just the routine ones that, that moderate stuff's reading, the transact, P A reports of the agents, auditors, et cetera, et cetera, therefore chosen to pass any vote related to, and then number article 15, transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. And then he calls it, have a nice day. Go ahead, Fred.
Uh, two questions. Uh, every article that you have recommended by the voters, selectmen, you have a vote of zero to zero, shouldn't that be three to zero?
We haven't voted yet. At, we, the purpose of this meeting is for us to hear your input.
Yep.
You're to change our minds and then we vote.
Okay. My next question is that the town forest committee, we have them for at least six, seven years, I guess, withdrawing any interest from the Muslim town forest ones, because it hasn't really been any interest, well, 10 bucks of it. How much is in there now?
This is a report from, uh, October. Interest prior was $20 and 25 cents, and then that's what you have. There's a principal balance of $11,322, but there's only 20...
We used to get up to $500 a year of interest in there, but...
But the 24 go the interest of it, then it becomes part of the principal. You can't go back, you know, how many years you haven't gotten it to get it.
Right, I understand that, yeah. We have been drawing it because of the nickel alignment, though.
Right.
Great, um, good questions now on the...
Yeah, I, not a question or remark, I'll keep talking. To go back to the invasive species, okay, you keep calling it, uh, milfoil, and what's gonna happen is people are gonna tie this directly to milfoil all the time, where it is, it's invasive, invasive species fund, so we had, but you had the same problem with, with the town hall restoration and when they did the town hall restoration, town hall and theater restoration, people kept, continued calling it that and so people were turned off by it.
Okay.
And so you've gotta maintain this plant, I, I know, uh, article 13.
13's gotta have milfoil.
13 goes to it, but when you're speaking to this article problem, you bring up milfoil, you know, you gotta maintain that invasive species.
Okay.
I did correct the one, still.
Because, uh, I've seen it happen time and again where people get turned off because they're hearing the wrong thing, they're assuming you're talking about the wrong thing.
So noted, yeah. Thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Um, just articles two, three, and four, are they, will they be on the ballot?
Yes, they will be.
And will anybody be explaining these at any time to, is there anybody here tonight?
I can, I can address some of them if you'd like.
Yeah.
Did you have a public hearing?
There was a public hearing for those.
It was a public hearing.
It was a public hearing. Is there anything posted on the website about...
Yes, it was public, yes, it was.
Uh, no, I'm not about...
Is there something now?
But is there any information to help us understand what this is about?
I think she has something on her counter, I can make sure that there's something put on the website.
On the website, it'd be great, yeah.
I thought, I, I helped craft these warrants.
Okay.
And, um, a lot of, some of it's cleanup, some of it's procedural, and some of it is defined, definitions. And it's worth reading through them, because, uh, there's some issues about, um, what setbacks include and what they don't include, and, uh...
I, I couldn't tell what problem you were trying to solve by changing, um, article 3 and 4.
It's all related to administrative in the book itself.
But item 3...
It seems simple, Jeff, but it isn't.
Well, that's it, I mean, and that's why I look at it and it's like, I think I know what they mean, but I wonder what the issue is that they need to change.
Well, I'll move to one, one issue, okay?
Okay.
Solo panels.
Exactly.
Okay. And solo panels, cause if you notice, you have a, uh, they're, they're kinda neat now, they put them on a little pole and they stick a, stick the solo panels on the pole and they rotate. And, but the pole is in, not in the setback, but now we have a huge solo panel going into the setback.
Or when, or when the sun comes down and that solo panel goes over the, over...
Over the property line, over the setback line, okay.
It's, it's basic, this is actually the full text of what is gonna be implied and put it in the zoning ordinance, cause they weren't detailed or lengthy, but, uh, again, if you don't, not familiar with the zoning issues that they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, this is to help alleviate...
And one of them, just the first one, the first one, you say, geez, that's, that's so dumb, you just wanna make some small changes to it. Well, the thing is, we were prohibited from even touching that, from making typographical corrections to it.
Yeah.
And the thing is, it had no bearing on the subject matter, but let's say a word was repeated twice, couldn't change it.
Now, that, that makes sense. Um, I'm, I was just more concerned about the setback issue and, uh, for example, if you put a home on a piece of property, clearly there's a setback from the front yard, side yard, rear yard, whatever, and is that setback typically to the face of the building? What do you do with roof overhangs?
That's what, that's what, that was the second issue. Can't, can't, no, you can build a property here and have it hang over, I'm gonna build an accessory apartment, uh, build another room and have it hang over, since I don't have any, any, and it, does it apply to that? Yes, it does.
So now, if you have a roof overhang, for example, you have to measure the setback to the drip line of your roof.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right.
I know, I know in years that passed on the zoning, we had...
Right to the skies, yeah.
There were people that were challenging it on regulations.
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
All right, well, good, that helps me understand what, what the intent was of these articles.
Jeff, I, I have a question for you, what do you think about that last line, which says, this authority shall remain in effect till, until rescinded?
Well, I think that the answer to that question is real simple. We've, the town has approved this article in the past on occasion, but it ends at from one town meeting to the next. This is just basically, just put it in perpetuity, so that way we can, when mistakes happen, we can fix them, so we don't have to keep going back year after year and having this on the ballot every year. That's the whole purpose of it.
The only thing I like about having it on the ballot is typically their reference of change like Jeff has stated, and then you can see the changes in the zoning ordinance.
Changes would be, yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's just purely grammatical and, and numbering and stuff like that, it has nothing to do with context.
If an RSA changes, you know, or it gets superseded, we can pull it out and...
It doesn't say that, though, it says ordinance of state law in Dunbar Site Land Subdivision Regulations.
Yes, to revise internal and external references to the ordinance.
That's the RSA. In other words, if an RSA changes, um, as previously written, as we found out, we could insert a new one, but we couldn't remove the old one. And so it was like, it was, it was written so poorly, and the thing is, I'll be honest with you, our lawyer recommended it be written that way, and we're looking at ourselves in the planning board, we have two other planning board members here, and they said, why was this written this way? And so, we wanted to be able to take internal and external references out of it from a purely administrative point of view, not to change the intent of the, of any, any zoning regulations. Go ahead.
Um, so question, um, is there, or will there be some way that an average Joe like me can go back and look to see what changes were made in the zoning ordinance to make sure that a change wasn't made that did change the intent?
Well, you have the, you have the...
What kind of oversight is there?
The planning board is the oversight, and, uh, the thing is...
But the planning board's making the changes.
Uh, most, these changes are being made by administrative assistant in that, in that department.
But is there, you know, here's our zoning ordinance of this date, if it's posted on the website or whatever, here's our current zoning ordinance as of this date, is there an archival record or something?
I'm sure, yes, I'm sure, should we save that?
Okay.
The zoning ordinance shows the different, uh, the changes.
I have some revisions.
You've got them, okay.
Yes.
So you can go back and look and see?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the thing is, um, remember I alluded to the fact that we're doing some major new changes in there? I'll give you one example of how things were managed in the past in, in that particular department, and I'm not gonna say any names, but the thing is, we had a zoning change made at town meeting, and it took almost four months to get it printed by, uh, by the admin person. The thing is, here we are, we'll, someone comes in off the street, they wanna have the new zoning change, or they'll look at the zoning, and we had no zoning rules.
Wasn't updated.
Wasn't even updated, and it was just due to, uh, a lack of understanding of how to do the job. And, uh, we're gonna make, we're trying to, this is one tool to allow that admin person to get things straight.
It's not gonna be one of those things where they're gonna be doing it on a weekly basis or anything like that, it's gonna be as needed, you know?
Right. The thing is, as I said, when we found out that we could add RSAs but not take them out, we just looked at ourselves and like, saying, who wrote this crap up? Okay. I'm sorry, all right, that's enough on that. Any other questions on the whole process? Yes, sir?
I wonder if, uh, the board had considered, uh, something that came up with the, uh, budget here for the school district last night about the, uh, police officer.
We're gonna discuss it further tonight as the meeting goes on, uh, briefly, but we have had no language submitted to us for that and to the board at all for that at this point. From the, from the, from the department, the department sponsoring that.
Do you have the salary of the new library?
Of the new library?
No, we do not have that information.
You don't have her salary?
Uh, why?
They did give us when they met with us.
No, the budget is, is, the salary is with everybody that gets payroll.
Well, as much as I wrote it.
All right, Fred.
When they, when they did come tell us, they, if I were a salesman, it could last a year.
Not bad, Jeff.
What a reason.
Not bad.
Not bad.
Quite a lot, Jeff.
Not bad.
You're so lucky.
You got a new position, you should have the salary.
You'll see, there's no detail in the...
There is no detail.
It's in our town budget, but the detail is under there.
Bookkeeper, 2,400. Payroll salaries combined is $70,000.
Yeah, but there is no other payroll, is there?
She has a, she has a, she has a very small contingent that works here part-time.
And that would be a bookkeeper up here.
So there is, that salary is all.
Yeah, $70,000, which I believe covers the health and other costs associated with the full-time position.
So she got me there 40 hours a week?
Yes. And they kept the better health insurance policy for this year.
There's, my understanding is that the hours are not gonna change, but there are other duties that she, uh, she's required to either research or set up for her programs that she presents during the public hours, so...
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public session and say thank you for attending and share some great questions with us. Hi, Dubai.
Thanks for doing, guys.
You're a project manager. I'm just...
Anybody been here so many years, I don't know what that's...
I know, I know. I've been to come up with a...
You know, if you just say them, somebody will even know.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have that application on...
Right, right.
Where's our gamble?
Yes, okay.
That's one of the most contested... Yeah? Yeah? Did you? You guys did a great job, man. It's like your fish.
We didn't sound, you sound like experts.
Yeah, you gotta say that.
You guys did a great job there.
Sounds like a fish.
We didn't sound like experts.
We're leaving right after you have the blue ties.
Well, you want us blue tie. But he was a clown.
But everybody's. Cause we had to wear the color.
Put your boat in, we get milk one.
Oh, yeah.
I had that, it was, they, it was the one problem, they approved one that was one, okay. Okay, the only, um, did it have the SRO like? I didn't look at it. Yeah, the new job was about the, um, audio and video. Right.
Because, uh, like I said, plug the strangers in everything else. It's a lot of people do this, right? We went out to before, you try to rake stuff out of there. They say a lot of times like ducks and doos and stuff like that, they'll go swimming in the warm pond where they're just swimming around, they'll get something between the legs and feathers and they'll go for themselves. Cause that pond.
Yeah, okay, I was taking off my park.
Because back in the seventies, everything on the Friday department was all scrap pieces of paper. Brown paper was big.
No, your general.
Fighting pot, ponds, everything. He's in there, he's supposed to be making, trying to make a mile or something out of it.
All right, you gotta call us back to order please, if you've got any heavy conversations.
I'll come back, um, within the next week or two.
Yes, we did.
Thank you for the budget. And last time, of course the water was low, we dropped it on top of you.
All right, where's your gavel? Okay, let's, uh, let's talk about the vote, gentlemen. Give the first four.
Yep.
Five, number one?
Number five.
Number five.
Yes, go.
Okay. All right. Let's, number five, how do we vote? Thing is, at school, I heard the way the school board did is kinda interesting. They asked first to see if they would vote to make sure the amendment was on, then they voted to see if they would approve or disapprove it. I think we're all in consensus that I can say we're all, all the warrants are as fine as written, they're all on. We all agree with that.
Yeah, we've already reviewed the warrants for accuracy, so I'm in, uh, I'm in agreement to approve it as written.
All right. Now, uh, let's go individual ones. Number five, are we all in favor of number five?
Yes.
Kaminsky, yes?
Martella, yes.
Okay, that's both three zero. Six. Again, it's, it's for the, um, fourteen thousand for the revaluation. All in favor?
Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes.
Martella, yes.
Okay. Number seven, the forty thousand dollars for the fire department emergency vehicle, Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes, that was what was recommended by the department. Martella, yes.
Number eight, highway vehicle reserve fund of thirty thousand dollars. I'd say Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes. Martella, yes.
To spend a hundred, uh, to send, to spend a hundred and seventy-one thousand to purchase, they're gonna make sure we get that word international out of there?
Yep.
Okay. Kaminsky, yes?
Martella, yes. Kaminsky, yes, has amended.
Item ten, to see if the town will appropriate some of a hundred grand for paving. Kaminsky, yes.
Martella, yes. Kaminsky, yes.
Eleven, the twenty thousand dollars for the transfer of station capital reserve fund, Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes. Martella, yes.
Sixteen thousand, ten dollars for the invasive plant species capital reserve fund, Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes.
Warrant thirteen, item, uh, warrant thirteen, approved, there were sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty dollars to, for milfoe control. Kaminsky, yes.
Kaminsky, yes. Did we discuss this?
We did. Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Kaminsky, yes?
I am not, I said yes indeed.
Okay. And that's it, gentlemen, we're all in favor of your unanimous.
I think we should, um, link, let's get the printout and revisit this, cause I think at town meeting that might be a, you know, so we know what the monies are being used for, get that paper that they submitted to us for the estimate.
Oh, yeah, for the, yeah.
Just for our town meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Because I think if we follow through with what's tonight, that's gonna be one of our most asked questions and where those hundred and thirty dollars is from and the rest of that.
Okay. Now, um, this is the hard part, gentlemen. Let's talk about, um, I'm gonna assign warrants to each selectman to do, help me talk to, we're gonna assign who's gonna talk to it.
You're gonna do the first one.
I'll do the first one, number five.
You can call that Mike.
Okay. Alternate would be Dave. If I say yes, okay, Dave, all right?
Yep.
Number six, wants to do that one? But that's gonna be done by, um.
Mary Lavelle.
Mary Lavelle.
Mary Lavelle. And who's the backup?
A selectman.
Uh, I'm gonna have Bob's backup.
Okay, Dave's number six.
Number six, you're a backup for that, Bob. And number seven, the fire chief, number seven?
Yep.
You want me to back the fire chief?
That's, that'd be fine. Dave is the backup. Uh, number eight.
So who's that gonna be? John and Dave.
Eight and nine will be the, uh.
Jeff.
Jeff.
You want me to back?
Yeah, that'd be fine, Dave.
Okay, so we're gonna have Jeff and Dave?
Jeff and Dave and eight and nine. We give David a break, Bob, you wanna be the alternate?
Can I just enter in one second? Number nine, the way it's gonna be worded is to purchase a new truck or is it a new dump truck?
The question was asked.
Here's the problem is he's gonna be getting a truck. If you look back at our wording, it was a six-wheel dump truck.
Six-wheel.
Six-wheel dump truck.
And that was asked tonight, so it may be asked again if we don't delineate that.
And you could put dump slash plow truck if you wanted, cause it is used as one of our primary plow trucks.
Yep.
Dump slash plow truck.
Okay, six-wheel dump slash plow truck, okay.
Not an international.
Correct.
Okay, you, is Bob doing ten, is that what?
Yep, Bob's gonna do ten, Jeff's gonna be principal. And Bob will be the second there.
So Bob on, uh, on ten, Jeff said, you know, we're having his road meeting later in the spring anyway. Right. But railroad would be the primary with Montalona being like a secondary work road. Those two roads, if you wanted to write those down. I'm putting it down now. Yep, Jeff and Bob.
Or weather, weather, weather dependent ones too.
Yeah.
Okay, eleven, transfer that, I'm gonna say Woody. I'll be, I'll be that for the backup.
Okay.
Uh, twelve, all right, he is the lucky one, invasive plants, since I messed it up, I can't beat him.
Bob is the.
Bob is principal.
And he's a, he's a resident, yep.
Bob and, who wants, Dave?
Bob Leonard.
Yeah, Bob Leonard if you want. Dave is backup. Uh, thirteen. Yeah, Bob, Bob and Dave.
Remind me that, David, it's not you, Bob.
I just, this way we have an idea, you feel comfortable getting it out?
Right, and the other thing too is in the past, we've assigned speaker and they forgot it was town meeting and missed the town meeting, so we needed someone to step in.
Text me. Hey, you know we have town meeting?
You'll be there.
I'm surprised we had a pretty good turnout, I didn't think we'd have anybody. Cause they watched the previous meetings there, they were pretty, well, I know a lot.
Yeah, but this, I think this showed it off, this one page.
Right. Thank you for the large font lean.
You won't.
Keeps my one point two fives working.
Wow, I'm up to two.
Now like you're gonna discuss the.
Yeah, uh, let's talk a little bit briefly about, um, uh, the school resource officer.
You wanna pull their budget out, Mike, on you?
Um, well.
They have their warrant article.
I think I gave you all a copy of the school warrant.
Article number four, right?
There's one left.
No, I don't think, I don't, I didn't get that one. Yeah, it's article number four.
The school warrant article, I didn't get it?
No, I didn't ask for it, I didn't want it, and you don't know me.
Yeah, you, you totally aren't doing it. I kept mine lean.
Okay.
You wanna make a copy of it or you guys want to look at it?
Well, it's just.
We can just share it, I guess.
I, I pretty much know this stuff. So Bob, you were there, what are, what are your thoughts, Bob?
I don't have a warrant article in front of me to criticize or to look at. And I'm not gonna try to guess how they want it written or how they like to see it written. So I'm not gonna weigh in, I listened last night pretty well. I have a different opinion, so.
Okay, I think this, Chief, I'm gonna, you're listening to this, I think, uh, there's some work needs to be done before we can go move forward with this. Work schedules, MOUs, all sorts of stuff. And I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm opposing the idea of, uh, degrading the police department as configured with the detective to move those hours to the school. In a, in a permanent position. I did some work on that, I think it's worth, it's worth, uh, more study before we make a, a decision. I think, as I said last night, the process was a little rushed, I think, the school board just came to us in January, as you recall, and I don't think we had enough time to really digest the impact of, uh, the decision that which was being proposed by the school.
So their warrant article was just for their school budget? And now there would need to be an additional warrant article to transfer town monies for that?
It'd be an additional article for us to, uh, not an article.
Use town money for that.
Not, but basically convert the position.
Oh, to a full timer.
To a full timer. And that's the issue, that's on the table. There are benefits of a school resource officer. Go ahead, Leo.
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, um, is this gonna be at the detective, uh, wages?
Detective, that's a misnomer. The detective pay rate is the same pay rate as a patrolman.
Okay, all right.
As a second, second.
Okay.
Level two patrolman, right?
The other question is.
Doesn't matter, it depends on our experience.
Okay, the other question I have is, in this is, uh, number one, I agree with what you're saying, cause I heard, I was here when she came in and talked, I was like, wow, that's out of the clear blue. But, um, there's twenty thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars, does that cover wages, insurance, pension?
The answer is. The answer is yes.
It covers everything.
Yes, with the exception of.
For just the five and a half hours plus what the part-time to full-time creates?
Yeah, right, this covers that small time extra.
Yeah, there's a few small incidentals which I found that were not included in there. I think specialized training, Chief was gonna be responsible for in this plan.
But that comes out of our budget and.
No, but this, but specialized training was not budgeted for.
No, I understand, I'm saying, ultimately it still comes out of my pocket too.
Okay, I understood. And the thing is, and the thing is, uh, we just, last year, we're hesitant this year as a board, because last year we went to the voters and converted a part-timer to a full-timer, and we're doing the same thing this year.
Right.
And the thing is, I'm not prepared to do that at this time.
Yeah, right, I, I, I agree with you there, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels like here, but I agree with you, I think it was a little too quick, number one. It seems like we're following more, it's almost like since we've went to Bo, they're telling, they must have some people on our school board, because it seems like we're following Bo's lead only.
The thing is, one thing with Bo, um, they only have a part-time, uh, school resource officer, and they have many more schools than we have.
Yeah.
And, um, it's a, to me, we have to look at, uh, management of hours, uh, total cost incurred. What does the full-time position actually bring to the table for hours versus cost benefit ratio? Is, is an issue there?
I'd like to know what a resource officer does.
Oh, the, the thing is, there's a lot of value added.
I'm just asking though, what, what does the resource officer do?
Basically provides, uh, security to the school, provides, uh, it builds community relationships with the police force.
That I understand.
And this, the thing is, I can go on and on on the benefits of it, I don't have them all in front of me.
The safety aspect of it, didn't we install?
That's part of it, that's part of it. One of the.
We did upgrade the.
Thing is, one of the things I brought up is the governor, just as an example of the value of it. The governor last year of New Hampshire commissioned a task force to look at, um, safety in schools. It's pretty much after the, uh, the shootings last year. He's, they spent a thousand hours getting all sorts of experts in. And, uh, from school teachers to our resource, current resource officers, parents, teachers, uh, FBI, investigative authorities, also, I mean, the gamut was there, subject matter experts. And one of the fifty, they came up with fifty-nine security recommendations, some of them have already been implemented into the school, in the sense that some of the security upgrades. One of the recommendations was that every school should have, uh, they recommended, if, if could be afforded, a full-time school, uh, resource officer. And, uh, and so that, and the thing is, we have, right now, we have a officer who's been working essentially a few hours a week in there, but not nearly the amount of hours that would've been required. And the issue is, the proposal on the table is to convert her detective job, working thirty-four hours currently, adding a few more hours for a significant amount of money and adding more hours to the school. I'm not ready to go down that path as configured, and so I think it needs to be relooked at.
Kinda tells you what time of life we live in now, right? When you have to have an officer in school to make sure that the kids are safe.
I understand.
Pretty sad state of fears we're in.
But the thing is, um, you know, you say, um, you're right, and this time in day and age, I think, would never be heard of. I don't ever remember seeing any officer.
Yours weren't even locked at my school when we were kids, I'm sure yours weren't.
Yeah, but the thing is, this is the day, this is the times we live in, and so I'm not gonna.
Right, no, I understand, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there, but, but Bob, I think you, do you agree with, I, I like to hold off and just, I, I'd like to study more this year and with deference to the chief, uh, he's listening too here, I, I'd like to just look at that a little more detail this year. I'm not gonna take it off the table, I'm definitely not taking it off the table.
I would've liked to see them petition a warrant article with the wording they have, so at least we can look at it and critique that warrant article, cause I don't think anyone, and I thought about how you could write a warrant article, but I don't think it'd be palatable with the school in the long term, so, uh, I just thought, and like I said, I sat there and listened closely last night and I, you know, I may not say much, but I dissect things and as I'm driving home or as I'm sitting there, and so I don't think at this point in time, it's a good investment, you know?
Can I ask a question since I'm a taxpayer? Question to you, Dan.
You have to go to the audience.
Yeah, for you, we're, we're part of the Bo district and we've got two schools and they have a part-time resource.
Working, he's on patrol two days a week.
Right. So my point is, if they feel strongly about this and a full-time person would work and she will be involved with the Bo schools because she will be full-time, rather than take her away from your staffing, wouldn't it be wise for us to, even if she's covered under Bo, have it funded fifty percent by Dunbarton, fifty percent by Bo, so that their entire funding is coming from another source, but yet she's in, in, uh, licensed, basically, or, um?
Chief, that's answer, that's true station.
I mean, I don't, I don't.
I'm, I'm a little confused by the question, but I, I think what you're alluding to is that she's gonna be spending, uh, time in the Bo schools and a lot of time in Bo schools and that's not what the proposal was.
Oh, that's what I heard last night, is that she would be going to the different schools that encompass our children.
When, when there's, when there's, when there's an issue involving our children in the schools, that's why she would go there.
Only for our children, she, she wouldn't be going there for.
That's an absolute.
Okay.
Uh, if there's a problem at the school, where they need another officer, under mutual aid, she would go or one of us would go, I mean, so I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get caught up in absolutes, but as a rule, no, no, she's, she's a Dunbarton asset.
Mm-hmm.
She's part of their, of, of their, um, their team, but she's basically gonna be in, in Dunbarton unless there's some kind of issue involving one of our students at the school.
Well, I originally, last night, I was, uh, I was really in favor of a, I, and I still am somewhat in favor of a full-time SRO, cause it brings so many benefits. However, it, it's, um, as a part-time, I don't recommend it. I think it's one thing I don't wanna, less than the police department as it's currently configured. Chief, you worked so hard to get your detective in there, um, and you work, you, you, you beat the, you beat the selectmen down and the selectmen agree with you, they can make that part-time decision a reality. And I applaud you for that, because you needed her for investigation, uh, for investigation purposes. I think by having her work in the school more, the thing is, it reduces your work pool of available work. I really think that in, in the future, that if you think you can absorb that work in your current configuration, then we move, and she's got thirty-four hours a week right now. I think the one thing, decision you can make, and we can, we can, with more discussions we've got on the road, we can, we can make a dislection, a recommendation and decision to actually put her more hours in the school if need be, if need is that great. We, instead of working for you for, let's say, um, uh, thirty-four hours a week, we cut it down to ten hours a week for you and then twenty-four hours she's in the school without impacting the budget at all. And that way, we got, the school was, was happy with a part-timer, well, let's give her the twenty, give the twenty-four hours of her work schedule now to the school and keep the ten hours in reserve for you, for your work. And so that, that's, that's, that's an issue, in other words, if the school board felt strongly and the parents feel so strongly about it, if this passes, that gives us a little small indication that there's some strength there, that they want a school resource officer. I'm talking about the voters. Well, and you said last night you could absorb it, you get that extra police officer that we converted last year, and you pawned off some of the duties, one thing we could consider is moving the, uh, moving her over with more hours, and we can start with twenty-four hours, because there's a lot of things to be implemented with that, with what she wants to do. I mean, she had a great day planned of what she wants to do, but it's gonna take time to get all those things done. And I would start off with just moving, moving her over twenty-four hours, and that would be a management call. And we can direct that, but I don't think we're in a position to at this point, cause we're still rather, I'm gonna say not ignorant, but we don't have enough facts in front of us at this point. Bob, or Dave?
Um, I'll just pipe in, I think I have the same problem the chief had. It came in late, um, we didn't approach with the voters last year, and I have the same issue the chief had. Last year, we said that, you know, we're not gonna come to you for another full-timer, we're not gonna come to you for a vehicle. We're gonna give this kind of a break, because we knew that it was hired for the, um, voters to pallet another full-time officer to your force last year. Um, I'd love to see a, a resource officer for the school in there, whether it's part-time or full-time, it's not. You know, that's something for you guys to decide as a school and a police department. I have a granddaughter in the school and I'd love to see that, but at this time for the voters, with what we said to them last year, I don't feel comfortable doing it. And I don't want that, I don't wanna lose the faith of our voters with what we've told them in the past. And I think that if we convert a part-timer to a full-timer.
And I think that if we convert a part-timer to a full-timer last year, and we're doing a part-timer to a full-timer this year, as you know, when we do those budgets and warrant articles, the numbers aren't on that year for a full year, and it always gives the deception to the voter that we're trying to do something backhandedly, even though that's how we have to do it, cause it's part of a year. And even if you state the, the amount that it's gonna be for a full year, they don't quite get that, they think that you're trying to pass something over on them, and I'm in the same boat as you, Chief, this, this came so late, and we gave the, the guidance to the voters last year that we weren't gonna do anything, and I really would like to stick by that. And then maybe look at this closer through the year, especially where it passed, um, last night's warrant article at the school level. So we can see that the board at the school level.
Wants it.
Wants it, and, uh, now we can study a little bit more and come up with a, a good game plan maybe for the following year. But I, I would have trouble, uh, you know, after what we told the voters last year, come to women. You know, I'm in the same boat as you are, Chief, with that, and I wanna, I wanna make sure what we say to the voters, we hold true to, so.
And the idea came from the school, and my point is, they should petition us with a warrant article that looks to fund the officer that they want in the school. Cause we're the employer, so we have to pass it. Maybe I made the mistake of pointing that out last night to the gentleman next to me, but, uh, if they had a warrant article, and then we could critique what changes would be more palatable to put it before the people, and then you can let the legislative body vote. But I think at this time, and this late in the game, and we don't have a petition article, and I'm not looking to create one, cause I could write it, and like I say, if, if would end up lapsing, there might be somebody that's, is upset, because they thought they were full-time, and all of a sudden, some funding might be lost down the road, and they wouldn't be there, so. I don't think I, I would be the one to create the article, so it probably should come from the entity that wants to see a police, uh, uh, a resource officer in the school.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of this came out fairly late, not that there wasn't time to do it, but I don't think anybody thought about doing a warrant article on the town side as well as on the school side, so. That was kind of, this last week came into the process, and now that, now that makes more sense, and to look at it.
What happened with me is the light went on, it went on this week, you know, as to what the process is, and now, and then I was going, it's a good thing it reminded me yesterday to order a school meeting, cause I almost forgot of the same thing. You know, no, I was here and she mentioned that there was gonna be a school, uh, board meeting, so I went last night, but the light had gone on, and I didn't realize that it was over for petition warrant articles.
Yeah, it was Tuesday.
It was Tuesday.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh.
So you really couldn't create one at this point, anyway?
I, I, well, I could've written something up, but I, I'm gonna tell you that I don't think the school would like the language that's in it. Cause I don't think they wanna assume a greater responsibility, and so I, I really think they need to craft their own petition warrant article, cause they know what they want. And they could craft it so it fits their needs.
So.
Chief, do you have any input tonight?
Now, we discussed it at great length yesterday, and if, anything that we would say would be a rehash, and I don't think it's gonna change anybody's, anybody's mind.
So as far as petition, Dave, on board, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be a petition per se, where you have the signatures, but they should approach the board for discussion.
For a regular warrant article.
So that you can either express your interest, uh, you know, for it or against it, and then if they got the feeling that the board was against it, then they would go, they have the option of going the route of petition.
And I don't think this is the case, but because it passes a warrant article on the school warrant, can it be brought up at the town meeting and adopted any which way? Okay, I didn't think so, I just wanted to know, Judge. Cause it's an odd circumstance where something's approved at the school board level, but the actual action has to come at the town.
Well, the thing is, all they're proving is a transfer of money.
Right.
And, and they made a contingent on us approving. Okay, thank you, Chief, I'm sticking around for this. Um, okay, let's move, any other business, I wanna, since I'm gonna, I don't, I went through town business earlier, I don't have anything else on my plate, but I'm gonna go back to Dave for the last comments on anything.
No, I just wanna, uh, thank the board for agreeing with me to send something out to lessen the card and sympathy to his family, and I appreciate the moment it's on us, so. Longtime residents of Dunbarton gave a lot of good input in a lot of these meetings for our townspeople. And so, it's very important we send something from our office.
Okay.
And I have to, you know, I, I have to agree that the Chief was spot on about, you know, usually you put in another one, but there's so many people that probably would feel, wonder why they weren't informed unless it passed away. That's gonna, that would see in the town report now, and be able to reach out to the family and offer the condolences, you know, so.
Well, I also thought the Chief, uh, John Wigan was spot on when he said that should come out of the town fund, because he was a selectman for so many years and worked on so many other departments, but.
We did, we did that for other selectmen.
But to avoid the, uh, issues that just came up recently, I think it's just.
It does come out of the budget, it comes out of your paycheck, his paycheck. Indirectly, it comes out of the.
Don't make me give myself a raise next year. I was asking for one, I didn't get it this year, I'm upset.
Well, we were looking to cut your line.
Alright, uh, I'm waiting for motion, thank you.
Excuse me, public comment?
Oh, yeah, did we have that this year? Okay, yeah, we can have public comment.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, um, you mentioned about the, uh, town report gonna be ready for reviewing?
I haven't forgotten.
Okay, I just wanted to know, can I?
I still, that's still, I'm here, I have all the school warrants that I got last night. And then a couple of missing from town officials.
Right.
And then I will have the office girls review it.
Yeah.
And hopefully, I'll have a day or two, I can definitely give it to you in, in unbound.
Yeah, that's fine, just, just, no.
But that doesn't always come.
Just to see, um, our page. Alright, it's not so much for me, but.
But what happened at that time, when, when, there were, there was probably three or four pages throughout the printing company that shifted and shifted the.
Oh, 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 yeah, right.
Because my proof was correct.
Right, 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 right.
But my, that was a loosely proof.
Okay, but I, I'm just saying, you know, you know Donna wants to review.
Yep.
Now, give her the courtesy to come in and approve, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I plan on it, yeah.
And, uh, two, two other things, one is, um, does anybody know what their services are for less?
No, I'm gonna look it up before I leave tonight.
No.
Okay, um, the other one is, whatever happened with the bounce checks for the, uh, registration?
I know the answer, but I was hoping to let the town clerk talk about it, do you want the answer now?
No, we're gonna wait for it, uh, because that's work in progress, it's gonna, we have, we have some movement on, I'll just say, we have some movement on it.
Yeah.
There's movement been made, and it's gonna be addressed, uh, at next week's meeting.
It's gonna be done?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, oh, good, so six months, okay, done.
More than that, two and a half years.
Yeah, but I think there is movement on it.
Yes, there is.
Alright.
Okay, I have one more thing that, uh.
Oh, alibis, okay, go ahead.
Um, on the dedication, I like that we did the years without saying any names. After the years of service from here to here, can we just put a dash in twenty years in eighteen and thirteen?
Oh, the number, okay, we can do that.
Just so it, you know, at a quick glance, you can see, wow, that's a lot of years, right?
Yeah, how many, okay, yeah.
It's the only thing I could see.
I have time to do that, yes.
Okay. That's the only thing I thought, but I was, not, I liked that.
And before we make the final motion, but during, any last things?
No.
The Chief had, had done.
I'm gonna leave it.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, uh, police department received a grant for thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars from New Hampshire Project First Opia Reduction Grant. And, uh, they're gonna cover the costs of, uh, training and, um, some field work that, that, uh, the officer too that we have trained is gonna be able to, to do to work with families, the Dunbarton families that are, uh.
Any, uh, physical supplies, such as Narcan?
We buy that now, yeah. Yeah, we've been going through it, yeah.
Okay.
Wow, really?
Well, anyways, then, so, um, we, we'd ask them to set up a line for that, so that we can pay for the, um.
Okay.
Pay, pay for the training and, and, and costs and stuff.
Please pass kudos to Chris, I know he did the legwork.
Yes, he did all, that was, that was all his doing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think I already got copies of the grant, but it did go through.
Yes, it, it went through, it's a kudo stamp.
You know, Chief, we're in a small town, and like Leo just said, wow, you know, it's hard to believe that we even use Narcan in this town, but probably the use is a lot more common than we ever think about.
Yeah, we don't know, right?
Yeah, Narcan in, uh, in Cats, for the ED.
And any last items?
Please, thank you for all your work on this budget, it was very clear to read.
Uh, next week, I'll be bringing you a clean copy of the warrant, uh, the MS six thirty-six with the budget, after I upload it to the, um, DRA. And you'll be asked to sign it next week, so I can post it. And the deadline to post it is the twenty-fifth of February.
Um, one thing I just wanna let you know, I, I kinda alluded to just last, it was coming to me, anything else to answer? Just, uh, um, the school board meeting last night, they did a great job in showing how the taxes are artificially gonna go down, and then they go up, and then they're gonna be hit with a big, we mean, December.
Yeah.
I, I really think Jeff Strexler said he would help work out some verbiage, if we could make a handout leave at the counter, not now, in November. Cause that's when it's gonna be, that, that's gonna be the challenge time. In other words, in November, the tax is gonna go.
People aren't realizing that's when the taxes.
That time, you just want to have someone there on there, just so they could kinda. I think maybe, maybe we could do some at town meeting too.
Yeah, yeah, break it up a little bit, so.
Can you, can you hand stuff out like that?
No, just put a pile at the table on the entryway.
But you can do that?
Oh, yeah, that's just information.
Okay.
That's just your information. The thing is, I was talking with Judy, it's hard to send it out with the taxes.
You have to adopt an hour of safety in order to have inserts in your.
So I, I think just having it as an information, so Jeff thought, Jeff would help, if you send an email to him, he'll help you with some language.
Well, I think it would be helpful to have it on our counters too.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion at nine twenty-one, will you adjourn?
Wow.
Well, you just seconded, you've got a third.
I actually made a motion.